David, hey, you've got the remote. Mr. Fritz has it right there.
You want to see it?
Nah, I just wanted to get, get, just keep it on, David.
You're on the, you're being a little phased out by the, uh, someone behind you for now.
Dude.
This time we'll follow the August twentieth, two thousand eighteen council to order, and we'll have the invocation. Remove your hats, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time, thank you for this community. Please give us strength, guidance, and wisdom as we conduct the town's business, and keep everyone in mind who's involved. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen. Before we get to, uh, the approval of the agenda, I have about three announcements to make. We are now live streaming the council meeting, uh, was fixed by Mr. Fritz, uh, and that is to remind you that when you are at the podium, please state your name and address, and your comments will be held for three minutes, and that the microphone is very sensitive, so these undertones, suggestions you might have had, keep them to yourself until it's your time to speak. And number two is, um, we are pleased to announce the introduction of our new chief of Wilson's Mills, Mr. Adrian Williams. He came through, the interviews that were done by, uh, the county and by our staff, and I'm telling you, this gentleman is qualified, we're gonna be well pleased to have him on staff. Uh, so at this time, I introduce our new police chief, Adrian Williams. He's a retired SBI agent, so he has all the credentials necessary except pulling you in the car, and he'll learn that quickly. Mr. Williams, if you have any comments, feel free to do so, and if you have other engagements and you need to leave, we understand, but thank you so much for coming.
Just, I'm very excited to be here. Um, I've heard great things about Wilson's Mills, that really gets started. Good start.
Welcome. Thank you very much. And one other important announcement, or I think it's important to our town. This past weekend, David, Philip, myself attended the, uh, North Carolina Municipal Clerks Association. That's a tongue twister, if you may ask. And we now have the president of that association, Ms. Leanna Worley, and I thought it was a great event and well deserved for her. I did understand in the table conversations, and David had asked somebody, uh, about clerks. And there are some over six hundred retired and or active clerks in the state of North Carolina. Fifty or so, the lady was not sure exactly how many, but certainly less than sixty, but no, whatever, that are half the certifications that you have, and that speaks well for you. Uh, and that there's not a license for you to leave, that's a license for you to stay. And we appreciate your commitment, and I know the town has participated, but you've been the one who got out in big bushes and gotten that done, uh, and we're proud of it. So, we now have the president of the Clerks Association of North Carolina. At this time, do I hear, uh, approval for the agenda?
Mayor, I would, I would like to add, um, number eight out of B, general statute number one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three, to the closed session for possible judicial action.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman J.C. Trippett, all in favor?
Uh, all opposed.
I have it, we move forward. The approval of the minutes that you have had since the first of last week, uh, are listed here. The budget sessions that were done, special session meetings that were done, and they're in your packet. Do I hear a motion that we accept those minutes as written?
Do we have to do it by each one separately?
Because there's so many, unless anybody has an issue with a set, you can go ahead and approve those together.
So I'm making a motion that we accept all four minutes, minutes from August the twentieth, April the eleventh, May the eleventh, and June the twenty-sixth. I make a motion that we approve all, all the minutes.
I have a motion by Councilman Trippett. Seconded by Councilman Philip Wright, all in favor? I have it, we move forward. The forum is now open for our first open forum. Anyone has anything they'd like to say in the open forum? I have not seen anybody sign in.
I did, but I'll wait.
Okay. So if there's nothing in the, uh, open forum, then I declare it closed at six thirty-five P.M. Regular business meeting, planning department? Uh, I thought that Valerie was gonna be here.
She was with her son, it's me, and since it was not in my region, I'm gonna go ahead with the phone.
Okay.
Her report is in the packet, if anybody has a question, I'm gonna, I'll do my best to answer it for you.
We were, um, oh, I was unfortunate to hear that one of the subdivision that we thought was gonna be coming to town went through their application. That was near Strickland Road and Swift Creek, so that is, will not be coming to Wilson's Mills at this point. Or it may later, but not at this time. Anybody else have any questions about planning?
I was telling, Leanna, prior to the meeting, I don't know if anybody else is aware of it, certainly not within the Wilson's Mills jurisdiction, but it's in RUTJ. Where Sutherland Road bends around right near Ives Landing. That whole job there, Mark, two hundred and seventeen acres on the right-hand side, the sign went up today for sale for development, so just something to be aware of.
Even New Johnson called, claiming his system.
Yeah, it was, it's the one just before, is it, uh, Flummels?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes all the way back to this.
Flaming down.
Yeah, it goes all the way. You're right.
It's the two hundred and seventeen acres. The dollar's son over there.
Okay.
It was part of the farm that you, you live on.
I was landing area, okay, before.
Yeah. Actually, birds on the star, giving this plant that gave it that section.
But I just thought it was important, we would know that, because it's not being on the development.
Probably so. Okay, um, any other comments about planning? We'll move on to, uh, our street department, Mayor Proten, J.C. Trippett.
We have a street maintenance announcement probably for here, of what's been done, or he's been doing all the way, all month, anybody got a question about it? All right, we got a, uh, council that agenda out to change the speed limit on Palatin Road from, uh, seven ninety-nine to eight ninety-five. That will make the speed limit going by the, uh, that's all the way to the end of the town limit, that we will make the, uh, we're gonna ask the state to make the speed limit forty-five miles per hour all the way. I think it changes to fifty-five right after J.R. Jones's house right now, over there. And we're gonna, we're going to ask to have it changed to speed limit to forty-five miles per hour after the, where the town, town limit is, which is up there where, uh, uh, what's his name? What part of the property that was wrong?
Crabtree. The city limit's that wood, it goes up to Crabtree's house, or his drive.
I thought it wouldn't be on there, doesn't it?
You can not see the limits.
We used to have a city limit sign there where the well was property.
We did. The well is up, the city is in the city limit.
So it's only gonna go up to Crabtree's house?
Yeah.
Don't we already have a new place that the speed limit, city limits is thirty-five unless otherwise posted?
Unless otherwise posted, but.
Okay, it's posted at forty-five.
It's posted as fifty-five at that one child.
Okay, we have an ordinance change before us on the speed limit of Palatin Road in the town of Wilson's Mills. It's been approved by D O T, and we'll hear a motion from.
It has not been approved by D O T, I just wanna verify that. We, you, you will need to, um, approve the ordinance, and I'll send it in with the form request to D O T to change it, but we have that council action on it first.
Pretty good. So I make a motion that we approve the draft ordinance to change the speed limit on Palatin Road to forty-five miles per hour to the city limit.
Motion has been made by Councilman J.C. Trippett to change the speed limit to forty-five, so I hear a second. Seconded by Councilman Johnny Easton, all in favor?
Uh, you said the city limit, the city limit, in front of Wilson Earle. The road in front of Wilson Earle is not city limits. The, the well is property is, but the road is not, that's what I'm saying.
No, the road is not, but the road is a well property.
It goes in front of Wilson Earle, but it's wooded area back, if we're getting building.
We can't change the city limits from the Crabtree property to Wilson Earle's, because it's not city limits. It's in the E T J, but it's not the city limits.
Right.
We're changing it from, right there, Mr. Jones's house up to Crabtree property. But there is a city limit sign in front of Wilson Earle's house.
That will.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, I have it. We will put that ordinance in place and forward it to Department of Transportation for the sign change.
The, uh, the other discussion on temporary value places, we're gonna be, uh, done in closed session with, uh, our engineer and our lawyer, and then we're going to have a final combination on that, by the end of the month.
We're going to close session then?
That's what that second, I think, the second thing was, to go into the stuff in closed session, that's correct, Leanna?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay, Councilman Wright, you've been busy, uh, events report, park report, silver stars?
Well, there's, uh, silver stars, they still have their meetings, they changed them from last week, this coming week, this coming week. Uh, they went out, wanna play a game to the town hall, had lunch at the town hall, and then they went to a spiritual house, the first place, and had lunch at Jones's cafe, and I thought, oh, lunch, he's Dave Jones, that's how it goes. And, uh, they're gonna do craft lunches coming with. They go, you know, meeting and hanging in that. Some ladies, they're bored as years ago, but they still have their meetings. The event board is still planning to be here today at park on Saturday. The banners are being put up, I guess, I may draw them all, let's say, I'll draw them up anyway, I hope. There's ever thousand getting down there. And everybody wants to come out to one, they're eating hot dogs or whatever, feel free to come out, but you can't take none home with you, you're eating right. The park itself is coming along close. We've got the horse chute pitch and pits in, we've got the sandbox in for the children, we've got seesaw partially completed, we've got the, um, bad head and post up, we ain't got an egg yet. Hopefully they have that available, they're sending the speed wheel near speed wheel, seeing if that. And maybe in the next couple of days, we'll finish up the volleyball court, and a few other things, all right? We're gonna try to have a ready for Saturday, not everything, but a lot of it, we'll be here twenty, thirty.
Anybody else have any comments? Philip's been busy, we appreciate it. Um, Councilman Johnny Easton, sewer report.
We're making a little headway. We're moving along, as you can see, we're coming up on Wilson Mill Road out here from Tony's store, we've added the old Baptist church. We are, on First Street, we're hoping to finish that this week. They put the bore in, they working, they were working on it at six o'clock when I come by. They're delaying pipe, and they delay it down to Miss Wilson's house, that we're being pressured to. Then over on Palatin, hopefully we're gonna finish that Palatin Road this week, they got set a manhole tomorrow, and then hopefully we're gonna set the last manhole, and then go and start somewhere around Parker Street, and go down. But that's all right now. And they're thinking about, we're gonna have a sewage meeting tomorrow, and we'll talk about that.
Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday. And then Thursday. And we'll talk about that manhole, but the county said we didn't have to change that manhole over on Iran Street, that we could go right into it, hopefully if that's all it is, all we had to do is bore that manhole. But we're across Main Street, and we started down Main Street over in front of, uh, Mr. Mitchner's house, George Mitchner's last house. We're coming this way, but they, they stopped so they can make this bore out here. They got a few more bores they wanna make, before they get everything going, but I think we're through. And without three taps, we went down to Ernie's house, and there's one on Mitchner Street, and there's one more that we like putting in to finish up Hodge Corner, that's what they call it, this Wilson Mill extension.
Can you see like now, based on what's been done, that they're just about on schedule again?
They, I think they're possibly a week, a week and a half behind, but they're also talking about bringing in another crew. So we'll see Thursday what they're gonna do, when, uh, Thursday.
Very good, well, that's gonna make a big difference, big lead when it's all cleaned up.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman McGowan, uh, police department report?
Uh, defer to Chief Philiard for the report.
Uh, you should have a copy of it in your packet. Uh, main thing, we've got a few incident reports. Uh, we had a pistol stolen by a member of the family. He's been arrested, gun is still missing. Roddy PD retired gun that was stolen from Wilson Mills. Uh, just, the body armor's been ordered, five sets out, and it should be in any time. Body cameras are in, officer's gonna start there, they're getting trained on them. So hopefully they'll be out on the, the community today, you should see them out there. And a new patrol car is in, we got a few things to set up, and she'll be up and running, and it'll be at the park on Saturday also.
Very good. Uh, I want personally thank, and I know everybody here does, there's been a lot of conversation about it. Uh, Billy has stepped in and been interim chief for us, and has done an excellent job, and we sincerely appreciate your help.
Thank you.
You and, and your staff. Okay, uh, let's see, let's move forward. Maintenance, Randy?
Matt's been working hard on keeping his grass good around here, let's bring one down, whatever he can. He's replaced the field line on the way there, trying to keep everything in tip-top shape. I'm gonna begin with him one day in a week, so there's a lot of trash on the side of roads again, um, see if we can get some. Maybe church group volunteers, or two of them that have, uh, community service, um, to help out. I know with the state, it's kinda hard to get community service right now, but we'll get with them helping, but, uh, we're gonna get started on that again. That's right now, that's all I got.
Um, a couple, three months, maybe four months back, we had mentioned about the litter signs being put up in town, any progress being made on that?
Yeah, it probably slipped my mind, uh, okay.
Uh, Claire?
That went by.
I, uh, contacted the D O T and Mr. Wilson, um, and they're looking into putting D O T signs up, I mean, uh, litter signs up. Um, and I also, I don't think I mentioned this on my floor, I contacted them, about a tree, hanging over down here in the fire apartment in Palatin, that was blocking, you could turn a left. And they were having a pool out in two intersections, look around the tree, and they come out and plant it up for me.
Good enough. Uh, financial report, Chair?
Uh, you have the revenue expenditure statement in front of you? Uh, everything is in line where it needs to be, um, town hall is paid off, we got the deed and the, that's been registered and everything, and so that is taken care of. Um, does anybody have any questions about the revenue expenditures? Okay. Um, the auditors were here, and all that has gone really well. Um, they're gonna try to fast forward us with the audit, so that I can have it done and ready to go before I leave. Um, and be able to go over it, and then they'll present it, um, after it's submitted. Uh, uh, that's pretty much it with that, but it said that everything is going good with it. We just have a few things that we have to take care of. Um, I do have a budget amendment. This budget amendment is, um, from actions by council. So one of them was the, um, mower, and uh, the other one was the, um, the reimbursement to Mr. Bryant. So there were things that council had already voted on, but I just had to get them incorporated into the budget.
Did you say that budget amendment's already been approved?
No, the budget amendment has not been approved, the things that were purchased or spent, um, those you had, those were council actions, but I need, uh, like a motion to approve a budget amendment. So you approved that side of it, but I have to have approval for the Bryant side of it.
So I'm arguing with you, budget amendment for twenty-five thousand, now for the third year. Budget amendment for number one, if I may think, I think.
Motion has been made by Councilman Wright, do I hear a second?
Say.
Seconded by Councilman Randy Mander, all in favor? All right. And that was cool, good job. Any questions for finance office?
Yeah. About a month ago, you will give us a report on the sundowns, I think it's six thirty.
There, um, the auditors being here, there have been some adjustments, and they're coming with their, um, final numbers. So I will have them, and I'll give them to Leanna for you, but it's, if I gave you a number now, it would be not accurate.
We will give them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, typically, you, like, the, typically, the audit is not submitted until October thirty-first. So we can do like roundabout numbers and things like that, but they're, they're gonna, they're fast forwarding it and putting us at the top of the list, so that we can get it all done. So you'll have an exact number within the next couple of weeks.
Any other questions? All right, this time, town administrator report, Mr. Allen?
Um, the first time I have is the North Carolina municipal counties meeting is September nineteenth through the twenty-first. And right now, I have myself, Councilmember McGowan, Chief Williams attending that, I don't know if any other council members are going or not, but at the business meeting, we do have to, um, assign a delegate and an option at voting at the meeting. And we won't have another meeting until after the, the league conference, so. Anybody else?
For the requirements for being delegate, you have to be an elected member of the council, here.
You're supposed to, they would prefer you to be an elected official, a county manager, but, yeah.
Well, seeing as how I'm the only elected official.
Well, and, and that's my question too, I have until Friday, I can get you guys registered and get your rooms booked, so have a perfect, anybody else? I don't know if anybody else can.
Where is it?
It's in Hickory.
So what's the date?
September nineteenth through the twenty-first. Let me double check that.
This is one thirty, Friday.
Nineteenth through the twenty-first, and it will go through probably about nine o'clock, the evening of the twenty-first, so we'll get, probably look at coming home on Saturday, it's about three hours, three and a half.
So do we have to run with the delegates tonight, tonight?
We need to vote for a delegate in the afternoon tonight, because we will not meet again until after the conference, so.
Everybody wanna join me on the trip? I thought you were the one, you're the one who made the.
I've got a conflict.
The ring of the veil.
I have a conflict I can't change. Leanna would certainly be willing to go.
Well, you, you know, like I said, they prefer an elected official to be the delegate.
We could use you as the alternate.
Yeah, you could, you could appoint me as the alternate, and I'm gonna be there anyway, because our association has a member on that board as well, so.
I make a motion that, that David McGowan is a delegate, and, uh, Leanna, where are you at all?
Right.
Motion has been made by Councilman Trippett, seconded by Councilman Wright, to have Councilman David McGowan be our delegate for the convention over September nineteenth through the twenty-first, and our alternate will be Leanna Worley, all in favor? Uh, I have it, thank you very much.
And the only other item that I have for you is, um, just for information only, again, took action several years ago, the weight administrator, the surplus any property below the value of five hundred dollars, and we've had, um, interim chief pilliards and detective pilliards cleaning out a lot of stuff in the property rooms and the extra office back there, so we keep coming across a lot of junk. Um, because these are laptops, they are being destroyed. The body armor is also being destroyed, because it cannot be reused, so all of the, and all three of these sheets are not being sold or given away, they're being destroyed.
How do we destroy a body armor?
Shoot a bullet ammo.
That sounds like a who's.
It's time for the rain, basically, off your seat.
Can you hear the sound of the laptops?
We drilled it, we drilled it with holes.
Oh, that's, that's no fun.
That's all happening.
Do we, do we have to have a motion? We did, because you can do that.
That's right.
Okay, now we, unless someone else has anything to discuss as far as the town administrator's concerned, we'll go into our second open forum.
Bernadette, and I would like to, to come down with us. I have a couple of things that I want to discuss. Um, one thing, the grass, it has looked the worst around this town, it's so tall, it's been seeped out, and I realize it's rained a lot, and Matt's been working at the, uh, helping out at the park, but it looked like a, a pasture, and it was cut last week out here in front of town hall. And, um, I just hope it looks better than it has been. Also, this out here, where this, uh, two-story house is, there's been a yard sale stuff out there for, I know, probably over a month, for two months. It's rained in it, and it looks bad for our town. I don't know who's in charge to try to get it cleaned up, but it looks bad. We even had somebody ask us about it that lives out of town, can y'all get that stuff cleaned up? It's a eyesore. Also, I have a couple of concerns at the park. Uh, first of all, the seesaws. I know there are boards, but are there gonna be handles to, on those seesaws, to hold on to? Philip?
Here.
There are?
Yep.
Well, I was wondering too, because I know kids, and sometimes they get a little wild, and they walk onto that plank, and if they fall and hit the corner of that board. And if they fall and hit the corner of that board, they're gonna get hurt. And maybe, um, to update the park at time, I know it takes time, but maybe we need to go out and if we can. So here, buy park play equipment. It's gonna look better and hopefully it's rounded where the kids won't get hurt. Just my suggestion and my thoughts. Um, also, last fall, we had the planning board denied, um, had a meeting, they denied, we went to the park, planned on four of the adjustments, Charles Wilson's son's house. Uh, then it was denied because they told him he would have to build, uh, fifty-third road to go in there at least past that house. Well, I would like to know what has changed. I mean, didn't he have to have a permit to get it started from the town?
I can't answer that, I'm unfamiliar with.
I know that the planning director, Mr. Anderson, had been reviewing that and they, I think they've come to a conclusion about what happened, we'll be discussing that.
All right, thanks very much.
Any other comments?
Uh, Sean Fritz, forty-six, Woodland Drive. Um, I just wanted to ask, Randy, that, is there any movement on, um, the Ives Landing subdivision related to the culverts, the driveway's water runoff? Uh, and also with that, specifically two sixty west Chase, my neighbor who's, uh, she's, uh, she's on the better side of seventy and she's, she was told about three months ago by Glenn Weeks himself that, uh, the culvert and the driveway are obviously, the four, four edges, uh, one's higher than the other, which I'm sure they'd have to rip out the driveway, replace the culvert and re, uh, realignment, so I just wanted to know if there was any movement on Ives Landing or, uh, and then if there has, if, uh, two sixty have been involved in that conversation.
Is Glenn saying anything about replacing?
He said it's the homeowner, he didn't say, I was part of that conversation, um, but he did say that to the homeowner, that, uh, we have to whatever, construction words to.
He would do it or the homeowner would have to do it.
That he would have, that it would have to be, now I don't know the verdict specifically, but I think he said, from what it was related to me, he said that it would have to be, that we would have to realign it. Whatever the word is, maybe so that the water runoff, because the, it's, driveway is above the, and it's on a corner lot, so it's, there's a lot of runoff that goes through there. I don't, I didn't think to ask if that was, what, what the exact verdict was. I did ask if she had gotten anything in writing, but that wasn't, unfortunately she didn't.
Does, does the water lie in her culvert?
It lies in, it lies before the cul, in the culvert, yes, before it gets to the, you know, the one at Diane's house there.
Yeah.
It's, uh, so it's a corner, so it's that bigger piece of, there's a whole bunch of landscaping stones in there, it just.
And that's higher than her driveway?
And, yeah, the culvert on her driveway.
So the elevation's got to be changed in the driveway cover?
Yes, sir.
But I'm, I'm confused a little bit. It's a culvert at the street intersection of, of Woodland and.
The driveway has to be raised and the corner has to be lowered from what?
Ryan, would you like to update the council and, and Mr. Fritz on what you've seen from that? This is our town engineer filing.
Well, um, we identified, we, I went out and met with the homeowners association president and we walked the streets and we did a pretty in-depth analysis of the problem areas that, that were identified at that time. And as I understand it, since that time, I think there's been several other, uh, little complaints from, from different owners.
Some, some of the minimal work that's been done has segregated some of the other areas.
Okay. Um, I'm not familiar with the location just based on the dreads.
It's, uh, as you go in west Chase, it's the last house on the left before Woodland. That corner lot, so third house on the left, first intersection.
Oh, right, right. Okay, that and several other places, uh, were identified as problem areas. And that was one of the questions at the time, without doing further analysis and survey and things of that nature. One of the recommendations there was to determine if that, if those pipes were higher relative to each other. And it sounds like maybe Glenn Weeks went out and did some of those shots on, on his own, because I don't, we haven't, we haven't done that. Um, you know, at the time Glenn had volunteered to fix some of those problems. And to be honest, I'm not sure exactly where that stands, uh, with, with Glenn Weeks. Maybe there's, um, an update there. But, but at that specific location, I think it would need to be, or should be verified that that pipe is indeed lower, and I, I look at it by eye, I think it's higher, yeah.
At the street that it is in the driveway.
Is it holding water? That, that would be one of my first questions, and is it definitely holding water? Um, I also have heard through Matt and I think, uh, maybe Randy had rode out there.
I rode out.
Oh, okay, J C, I'm sorry.
I rode out. Me and, me and, me and Matt rode out there the morning after it came a two and, two, two or two and a half each raining. And it was still raining when we went out.
Right. Well, that, there's been some investigation on, uh, these ditches and pipes after rain events, but I think just my personal opinion is it comes down to whose responsibility is it to fix these problem type areas? Um, the developer, whoever that was years ago, um, he put those streets in. But the driveways themselves were put in by builders. So it raises the question, whose responsibility is it to raise driveways when the pipes don't get put in? The, the developer didn't really do that when the subdivision was built and accepted because the driveways didn't go in until after, after the subdivision was approved and recorded. So then the builders come in and they put in, uh, their driveways and pipes, so to me, it really does come down to the question, whose responsibility is it to adjust and fix driveways if that is indeed the problem? And I don't know that I have the answer to that question, it does come down to a town policy on the matter, I think. But, um, from an engineering perspective, I would suggest in that specific location that we go out, maybe myself, go out and shoot the grades myself and just check and verify that that is indeed the problem. And if it does, then the solution might be to lower one of the, uh, driveway pipes, which would involve cutting out the concrete, excavating, uh, reinstalling the pipe at the correct location and pouring concrete back. It's not a simple endeavor by any means, but, um, I can, I can look at it, I can make a recommendation on what needs to be done, but who pays for it, who's responsible for it is really the question at hand, I think.
That brings up another question then, is in doing that, does it require a permit to modify the culvert or the driveway to bring it up to acceptable water flow? Um, and that's a question for the planning board or, I think you're shaking your head, so I guess.
If it, if it comes down to an issue with the driveway and that is the issue, then that's unfortunately where the town's responsibility would end, because it's a builder issue, it's a private property driveway. That's the same, that's our same policy as it is with, you know, culvert issues under driveway versus culverts under roads. Roads are our problem, fortunately the driveway is the home's problem, so you know, if we, if we went at it like we would go at any other kind of issue and have the property owner, you know, if you look at, I'm trying to think of another situation where you might have this issue, maybe like an abrasion issue or something. And the homeowner pays to have the actual study done and the work done by an engineer and it turns out that it's an issue with whatever problem we've got with culvert under the road and the town needs to fix that so that it doesn't continue to be a problem with the driveway. Then again, that's, that's the town's responsibility, but if it's solely an issue with the driveway, then that is the homeowner's responsibility.
How much order does it hold? Pardon? How much order does it hold, six acres?
That, that I can't answer. I mean, it's, it's kind of more of a specific problem to the overall west Chase, um, uh, water flow that's been kind of, I guess, put on the back burner by, um, you know, from, from a client that had said that he would address. I haven't seen him since he was out there, I think that one day that you got him out there, um, a couple of months ago, so I guess it's more of a specific, specific example, I was just kind of wondering if there was any movement with Glenn in general with, with, uh, the report and such.
I, 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 I want to say that me and Matt, and he'll, he'll tell you what he saw, but I'll tell you what I, we were out there, we did not see a ton of water was sitting. We saw a little bit of water sitting, but within two hours it would have been done. So, uh, I didn't see anything that I, I can't specifically say that that place that you are, because I don't know exactly where that's at. But I didn't see anything that was in a situation that the water wasn't, took, wasn't, uh, being drained off. I mean, you're gonna always expect when you've got too much of the rain over a course of an hour and a half, there's gonna be some standing water in the ditches for a little bit.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's understandable.
Well, I, I didn't see anything that would dictate, uh, that much. And, and Matt can tell you what he saw.
When there's, when there's enough, you know, over the course of time where it actually causes.
Yeah.
Stench, you know, from, from standing water in certain areas, so it's, it's just one of those things that people want to refer to.
Well, to make this suggestion, this has been on the table now for several months and nothing's been done about it except he said, she said. So we need to get to the bottom of this once and for all, and it appears to me that the homeowners association should write a letter to Mr. Weeks, who was the developer, and whoever the builder was of that existing house and have the meeting here at Town Hall if necessary and see if we can't get to the bottom of this. And then if they suggest we hire an engineer to go out and survey it and sure that, make sure that elevations are correct to prevent the drainage problem, then let's move forward with that and find out who, identify who's responsible, because at this point in time, all we've done is discuss it and there's nothing been resolved. And I'm sure that group that's having the problem is about fed up and I don't, I don't blame them. But I don't seem to think it's a town problem, but the town can be the mediator to make this go away.
We appreciate that.
The, the same situation's happened here, so the reason it's happening in mine, um, down by Kenny and Ernie's houses at the end of Mitchner. Over the years, um, the state used to maintain the roads, clean the ditches out. Well, they don't do that anymore. Over the years, everything has washed in and in front of Kenny's house at ninety-two Mitchner, they sit eight inches of water stands in his yard anytime it rains. It can fall, it can rain fifteen minutes, but it's a homeowner, that is a homeowner problem, I know. Uh, just like mine, the drain tiles have started crack, they're forty years old and they need to be replaced. That's gonna be my responsibility versus the town, even though it is the town's right away. That's one of the gray areas that we've got to figure out exactly who's responsible. The biggest thing is finding who, who's got to pay for it. Because that's, that's the, the down and dirty of it, I don't want to pay for it. I want town to pay for it, but it makes town a possibility, so I'm gonna have to pay for it.
I'll pass it on what that property owner, I know who you're talking about, I'll pass that on to Glenn and see what he wants to do about that. But as far as the ditches and other problems being council and trip brought out there and it, it dumped a flood right before that, and I called him on the phone and I said, you wanna ride out there and look at them drainage problems? He said, yeah, I went, cause I was picking them up. The road out there, the water was flowing through the ditches. On the town side, I honestly don't see any issues from the town's point of view, uh, as it relates to town. Um, water flowing through ditches, there might have been an inch and a half of water in a ditch and that was when it ran hard and flowed and flowed. Um, other than that, I'll ask him about that one lady, because I was out there with him when he talked to that one lady and let's see what he wants to do about that. But as far as all the other stuff's concerned, man, he talked about it, we went out there, he sent his guy out there, he did a bunch of work. And from what I could tell, it's working for now. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but for right now, it seems to be working fine, everything is following good, so um, as far as I'm concerned, on the town's side of it, everything looks good.
Any other comments in the open session? If not, do I hear a motion that we go into the closed session? So thank you all for attending our meeting July. Yep, McGowan has made a motion to go into the closed session, second by Councilman Ray Green, all in favor? I, I have that. Thank you very much. And you.